I would like to call to order the regular city council meeting of Monday, March the 13th, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I would like to ask everyone to please stand for our invocation by Pastor Bob Holt's Claw of Missionary Methodist Church, followed by our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father, we come to you in the mighty name of your son, Jesus Christ, and we thank you for this privilege and opportunity, Lord, that we could come to your throne of grace. And we pray today, dear God, for this meeting. We ask you to bless. We pray for wisdom for the city council and the mayor and all that take part in this meeting today. We just thank you so much for our city, dear God, and we ask your richest blessings upon us, Father. We pray for your divine blessing and protection. We thank you for all the police department, fire department, medics, and all that take care and minister to the citizens of this good city. And, Lord, we need your continual blessing, guidance, and grace and help. And we thank you so much for your love and care and grace and mercy. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. The first item on our agenda tonight will be to approve the agenda as presented. And at this time, I would let the council know that item seven, which is the swearing-in of our new police chief, Brendan Hunzucker, we will need to delete that item as Chief Hunzucker's father has taken ill today and could not make it. So we'll put that on for April the 10th, council meeting. So if you would scratch item seven, and then I would ask that you approve the agenda as presented with that correction.
Make a motion to approve the agenda, striking item seven, the swearing-in of Police Chief Brendan Hunzucker.
Have a motion in a second to accept the agenda as presented with the changes as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, it is unanimous. Next item will be approval of the minutes of A. City Council Regular Meeting of January the ninth, two thousand and twenty-three; B. Our City Council Work Session of January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three; C. Our City Council Regular Meeting of February the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three; and D. Our City Council Work Session of February twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. What's the council's pleasure?
I'll make a motion that we approve all four at one time. The City Council Minutes from January the ninth, Work Session January thirty-first, the Council Regular Meeting of February thirteenth, and Council Work Session of February the twenty-eighth.
Before we do that, can we have a discussion?
Yes, Councilman Freeman.
On the last one, the work session from last time, says I asked about the funding for Main Street program. It doesn't get into detail about what I asked. I asked about Bob Barker's donation being used to pay the service on the debt, the bonds. I'd like that put in there, please.
Okay. City Clerk Paige Green, will you make sure those go into our minutes of Work Session of February twenty-eighth?
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a second to the motion to approve the minutes as presented by Council Member Puet?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed, again, it is unanimous. Next item is the mayor's comments. I want to welcome everyone that's here tonight and those in our adjoining room that are watching through closed circuit. Thank you for showing your interest in your city government. Our city is still in the process of accepting upset bids on the museum building located on Main Street. This process will continue until the deadline for this bidding ends. At that time, council will take appropriate action on whether to accept the final bid. And I will stress that tonight, no action of any kind will be taken on the museum building at this meeting. This may concern some of you that have signed up to speak, but that's just what I was going to let you know. There is a new Welcome to Cherryville mural that has just been completed. It is located on the building within the parking lot of the new YMCA building. This mural was financed by Mr. Patrick O'Leary and was completed at no cost to our city. Piedmont Pavings has been hired to patch some ninety locations we have identified that are in need of asphalt repairs. In the past, the city has used about an inch and a half of asphalt for each repair, and typically, we have continued to have problems with these repairs. Piedmont Pavings is using four inches in local roads and six inches in state-maintained roads for their repairs. Hopefully, this will solve our pothole problems in the future. City Manager Dalton has informed me that after a meeting with the Carolina Tread Trail, Cherryville is looking at creating a trail from the city park area leading toward the water plant. The new ROW mower we recently purchased will be used for this project, so little if any city funds would be needed. On Friday, March the third, I attended the ribbon cutting for Scooter's Coffee located in the Walmart complex. A large crowd was on hand and were treated to samples from owners Jim and Janine Sasse. I will be attending another ribbon cutting this Friday for Shamrock Sports Station located at one oh four East Church Street. Last week, I met with local, state, and national officials from American Legion Baseball to discuss the possibility of Cherryville acquiring the bid to get the Southeast Regionals for the years of two thousand and twenty-four and two thousand and twenty-five. Representatives from Cherryville were Jerry Hudson, Legion Post One Hundred Commander Mike Robinson, Post One Hundred Athletic Director Ned Yates, Public Announcer Danny Aker, and Post One Hundred Coach Bobby Reynolds, and all of these lobbied on behalf of our city. The decision will come from American Legion Headquarters in Indianapolis, and the announcement could come as early as next month. In this past Thursday, I was honored to attend Cherryville Elementary's annual fairy tale ball. I gave a royal proclamation to begin the event for all five kindergarten classes. I am always excited to visit this school and their classes. The students are so well-disciplined and attentive, and I would commend Principal Watson and all his staff for making my visit a pleasant one. On April the first, our city will be hosting the grand reopening of Main Street of Cherryville. The Chamber of Commerce and Main Street teams and committee members have been hard at work organizing all the events of this day. There will be a cruise and brew will be on Main Street from three p.m. to eight p.m. The dedication and ribbon cutting ceremony will begin at five p.m. Many local and out-of-town guests will be attending this event. I will be officially giving the welcoming and opening remarks shortly after five p.m. We are having beer and wine and several food trucks for this evening, and there will be a golf cart parade following the ceremony, and the band Ocean Boulevard will play following the ribbon cutting and ceremony. And all of our merchants are being encouraged to participate in these events. The city is hoping for a huge turnout, and at this time, I want to ask all citizens and urge you to attend this event. That is April first. And this concludes the mayor's comments. We will now move to the next item on our agenda, and this is special recognition of a senatorial statement honoring our former mayor, Robert D. Ostel. And I see they have family members present here, and I would ask them to please come forward. I want to read this letter I received from Senator Ted Alexander. He says, Dear Mayor Bean, please accept this North Carolina senatorial statement in honor of former mayor Robert Donald Bob Ostel, who passed away in January. I was pleased to honor his legacy on the Senate floor last Thursday, February the sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and wish to share this commendation statement with you. Thank you for your dedication and service to our community. And at this time, I will read the senatorial statement that was presented in open Senate. Whereas Robert Donald Bob Ostel was born March the twentieth, nineteen thirty-nine in Gaston County, to James Penny Ostel Jr. and Neil McGuinness Ostel. And whereas Bob Ostel worked in management with Carolina Freight Carriers for thirty-eight years and retired as Vice President of Terminals. And whereas Bob Ostel served the city of Cherryville and Gaston County in a number of ways throughout his lifetime, including as mayor of Cherryville for ten consecutive years, and a member of the city's Finance Committee, coach of senior Little League baseball teams, president of East Elementary PTA, Cherryville High School Boosters Club, Cherryville J.C.'s, Cherryville YMCA, and Cherryville Country Club. He was chair of Cherryville Economic Committee and Lake Norman Rural Planning Board, and co-chair of Gaston twenty-twelve Collaborative Partners Transportation Committee, board member of Gaston County YMCA Metro Board, Gaston County Cancer Society, and Cherryville Community Development Corporation, advisor to the Gaston College School of Nursing, and an officer for the Central Atlanta Council for Government. And whereas Bob Ostel was a faithful member of the First Methodist, United Methodist Church of Cherryville, and was also an active member of the Cherryville Masonic Lodge Number five zero five of A.M. Scottish Rite of Charlotte, Oasis Shrine Temple of Charlotte, Battle of Keans Mountain, SAR, and North Carolina State University Wolf Pack Club. And whereas Bob Ostel was awarded the state's highest honor, the Longleaf Pine, in two thousand and twenty-one, and inducted in the Cherryville Sports Hall of Fame. And whereas Bob Ostel died on January third- And whereas Bob Ostel died on January third, two thousand twenty-three, at the age of eighty-three. Now, therefore, it is fitting and proper to recognize Robert Donald Bob Ostel, former mayor of the city of Cherryville, for his dedicated service to his community. And witness whereof, the undersigned certifies that the foregoing statement was read in the open Senate on the sixteenth day of February two thousand twenty-three, submitted by Senator W. Ted Alexander, and signed by Sarah Holland, Senate Principal Clerk.
Daddy was very proud of this city, and it meant a lot to him to be able to work and give back to the city. He's left a great legacy, not just for our city, but for our family. We're still struggling with that, but thank you all for being here.
And we certainly do thank former mayor Bob Ostel for all the work he did for our city. We'll move on in our agenda, and we do have some empty seats if anybody wants to come in from the other side. Our next item on the agenda is special presentation of One Gaston Two Thousand Forty, and we have Gaston County YMCA CEO Sharon Paget here, and that's pages fifty through fifty-eight in your agenda packets. So Sharon, you have the floor now.
Wonderful, thank you, Mayor, thank you, council members, and Brian, Paige, everybody, for allowing us to be here, allowing me to be here tonight. I am representing the YMCA, but tonight, I'm also representing the Gaston Vision Two Thousand Forty visioning that we have been working on for about two years now. And so what the council members have in their hand now, that the mayor is showing you, they each have a copy of our completed vision statement that I'm going to be talking with all of you quickly about tonight, just an update of where we are. So the quick overview, I need my glasses to see this. What we're going to talk about briefly tonight is creating the community vision, how we did that, making the vision a foundation for community collaboration, action, and data, talking about what the vision is, what's next in our implementation phase. We're going to talk about a community information hub, and then how you can stay involved in the process. So this process has been about a two-and-a-half-year process, which was preliminary at first, planning and establishing groundwork. It is a public-private initiative, and thank you all very much for your investment in the process and for being a part of this. We had a very diverse steering committee. I served as vice chair of that committee. I felt like, as a community nonprofit organization, it was critical to be a part of this endeavor. And then just really purposeful community engagement that we had. We had three rounds of community engagement, over seventy workshops and meetings. We represented in every township of Gaston County. We had several online surveys, and we talk about having about seventeen hundred participants that we talked with. However, this was printed a little while ago, so we're well over two thousand folks that we have spoke with about the visioning process. We want the vision to be seen as a common foundation for the work of everybody in Gaston County, from nonprofits to corporations to small businesses to large businesses. And so what came out of this two-and-a-half-year work was One Gaston Two Thousand Forty. We have many municipalities, we are One Gaston, and then we want it to be a place where everyone thrives. And so as we were working through this, we wanted people to feel welcomed and valued in Gaston County. We wanted to make sure that long-term residents and newcomers, commuters, and visitors alike felt that belonging. We wanted a collaborative spirit, where people and organizations can join forces to address community challenges and leverage the benefits of growth. And you all know we're growing fast. Unique locales, our citizens from all townships shared that they want to make sure that we preserve the uniqueness of our communities. And I am a little biased to the Cherryville community, with a Y here, that the uniqueness of Cherryville needs to remain the uniqueness of Cherryville and not become something different. Quality growth, economic growth will be a part of Gaston County's future. It's already happening, it's here. So how do we make sure that we grow within that and that we manage the growth? And then inclusive, that nobody will feel excluded from or overlooked in the community, that everybody will see people who look like them in positions of leadership in the community. So out of all the information we gathered of over two thousand folks, we came to five focus areas that we're going to work on for Gaston County. One is Gaston shines. And how many times, and I'll look back here too, how many times have we seen on Facebook or Instagram of all the negatives that folks have to point out about Gaston County? Thank you, Council, for it. You just showed it right there. It's so frustrating, and there are so many wonderful things happening in our county that we need to champion and be proud of. So we're going to have a focus group that's going to work on what is best about Gaston County, and let's make it shine. Number two is One Gaston grows. Maximize housing options, provide adequate infrastructure, and retain character in our natural amenities. It did not go unspoken about Crowder's Mountain and our museums, and all the things that we, our lakes and our rivers and our streams and our creeks, and it just went on and on, our mountains, our coasts that were, you know, right in between. So that was very important. And then the third one was One Gaston works. Strengthening childcare, early childhood education, making sure that folks have a place for the children to be safe so they can work. Strengthening targeted economic development, readying students for college and careers. Number four, One Gaston connects. Railroads, trains, buses, Uber, taxis, light rail, you name it, our Carolina Thread Trail, how are we going to connect throughout Gaston County? And there's already a lot of great work being done. Understand, we're not going to create new stuff. If there's a group already working in these areas, we're going to bring them together and say, how can we accomplish this together? Also, we realized during COVID that broadband was an issue, and so how do we go about making sure that our entire county has access to internet? And then the last, but not least, in no particular order, One Gaston cares. Collaborate and build coalitions, welcome and value diversity, and promote health and wellness in body, mind, and spirit. Our community health assessments have just come out, and we have some work to do. And so we need to collaborate together to make that happen. Gaston Together is a nonprofit organization who will be the lead organization in this work, but of those five focus areas, anybody that's seeing this, anyone behind me, anyone in front of me, or beside me that wants to be a part of this, we want you to be a part. So please, reach out to me if you're interested. As a part of this, we will be building a community information hub, because right now, trying to find data about your county, your neighborhood, anything about a nonprofit, or even the stats of our county, difficult to find unless you know someone. So we're working on a community hub that the county's going to help us stand up, that anybody, community members, whoever can have access to it to get the data they need. So where are we in the process? We are forming teams. If you're interested in being a part of a team, please let me know. Help us spread the word. If you know any groups that need to hear this information, please let me know. We are on the traveling tour to share this vision with our community, and just remember that this is all about innovate, collaborate, and create Gaston County. Thank you. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
I'm second what Malcolm said earlier. I don't see Cheriville.
That's correct. So I did dig into a little research. We had reached out to all the municipalities to try to send us pictures and things, and the folks that were putting this data together put in the pictures that they received. So we missed that.
I went, I was involved in Gaston Together at one point, and we were talking about gateways in Gaston County, and I said, well, we have gateway, gateways in Cheriville, we have two seventy-four and one fifty.
Mm-hmm.
And they laughed.
Two seventy, no?
Yeah. Two seventy-four, Mountain Street, yep.
I'm not sure they're laughing anymore with the growth that's occurring. I was a part, where was I, that a thousand new homes are looking to be built here?
Yeah, what is, what is the vision for Cheriville in terms of this One Gaston?
Well, we hope that our Cheriville citizens, or council members, will be a part of any of these focus areas, because we want to make sure that all those things are happening in all of our municipalities. So we ask that anybody that wants to be a part of this to get involved.
It kind of hurts my feelings when you go through this book and see Belmont, Gaston, your pictures and all, and everything wrote up about these towns. It seems like Cheriville gets left out of everything that Gaston County does.
Uh-huh.
And you're asking for our help and the citizens' help, but you're not promoting anything about Cheriville in this book at all.
The only time I see Cheriville in there is when you show the map, and you've got Cheriville up in the upper corner where we are, but there's, I don't think Cheriville's in there at all.
Well, I may, I may speak, I believe it is, we came out here and did a focus group here as well with.
And we did in this building.
And we did it in this building. Had very little turnout.
I just over it just now, but.
Yeah.
Everything I see, like Malcolm said, is Gaston and Belmont.
Mm-hmm. Well, we'll relook at that.
I was on the original committee that chose the people that would be representing, and I put your name down, and I put David Day.
He was on the steering committee as well.
And Jeff Cash.
Mm-hmm.
So I was just wondering, are those, are they still working with this committee of Two Thousand Forty vision?
David Day is.
David is, okay.
Yes, he was on the original steering committee for which we did a lot of the initial work.
Okay.
And we know it's not your fault, but, you know, we'd just like to be included.
Absolutely.
We felt like for years that we're left out of everything, so we would just like to be, you know, feel a part of it.
I will make sure that, share that message, absolutely.
And we do have such a beautiful facility now, YMCA.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sharon. Okay, next item on our agenda is special recognition of employees for their years of service. As I call your name, if you will come forward, and any family members that you have with you, we have our media here that, Michael Powell, that would want to get a picture. So the first person to be recognized is Seth Barker. Seth?
Can you hand these to me as we go in that meeting? This certificate is awarded to Seth Barker in recognition of five years of service to the city of Cherryville. It's signed by our city manager, Brian Dalton, and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations, Seth. Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
The next one is for Josh Culver.
All right, how are you, Josh? This certificate is awarded to Josh Culver in recognition of ten years of service to the city of Cherryville, and again, signed by our city manager, Brian Dalton, and Mayor H.L. Bean. There we go, Josh. Congratulations. Thank you for your service. Our next person to recognize is Kent Ballard. Is Kent here? He's with our electrical department. Is Kent in the room? He's not here? Okay, we'll make sure he gets that. All right, Wes Bennett. Wes is here, okay. This certificate is awarded to Wes Bennett in recognition of twenty years of service to the city of Cherryville, again, signed by city manager Brian Dalton and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations, Wes. Thank you for your service. And now we've got the old-timer here, and I think he's here, I see him peeking out the door there, Jason Wofford. You're getting close to retirement, aren't you? This certificate is presented to, awarded to Jason Wofford in recognition of twenty-five years of service to the city of Cherryville, again, signed by city manager Brian Dalton and Mayor H.L. Bean. Congratulations, Jason, and thank you for twenty-five years. We're looking for twenty-five more. Okay, we'll go to our next item on the agenda, and this is a public hearing, and this is in reference to Piedmont Lithium Property Relinquishment from the ETJ. We have our planning and zoning director, Alec Blackburn, here, and at this time, I would entertain a motion from council to enter into public hearing. Have a motion in a second to enter into public hearing. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, of course, there is none.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens alike. We do have several people here from Piedmont Lithium, as well as Mr. Brian Skiva from Gaston County to answer any questions you as the council may have pertaining to the process here laid out. I'll start with a little bit of background. Several times last year, city staff and officials met with Piedmont Lithium, oh no, I'm going to blow some eardrums out now, met with some Piedmont Lithium representatives to discuss possible avenues and ways to proceed on with their project. On December ninth of two thousand twenty-two, they submitted a completed request for the relinquishment of five parcels of our ETJ properties along Anthony Grove Road and Heps of a Church Road. Those parcels were fifteen eighty thirty-four, fifteen eighty seventy-two, fifteen eighty thirty-eight, fifteen eighty thirty-seven, and thirty seventy-four sixteen. On January thirteenth, I notified Gaston County of this request, since if it was approved, it would be going to them, and they would have sixty days from the time that we relinquished to pick up zoning on it and have jurisdiction over it. On January sixteenth of this year, it was presented before the planning board, and they voted in unanimous agreement to approve, to pass on their recommendation to you as a city council for it to be relinquished to Gaston County. On February thirteenth, it was brought before you as a city council to set the public hearing date. Y'all set the public hearing date for this time. Between then and now, on February fourteenth, letters were sent to the applicants to notify them that it had been set in what time and date and where to meet. On February sixteenth, notification letters were mailed to all adjacent and abutting property owners. Five signs in total were placed on the five subject properties, and there was scheduled in the Cheriville newspaper to run consecutively, back-to-back, two advertisements notifying the public and general public that what was going on and when and where it would take place. My number was listed in all of those advertisements. To date, I have received fourteen phone calls from concerned citizens, both inside Gaston County, Cleveland, and Mecklenburg County, to request information about this process. And that has been brought up in just a simple vote that affirmed that this was still on for the day during the council work session. So we have met all general statute requirements for this.
You got comments from Mecklenburg County?
People living in Mecklenburg County have called and asked questions.
Were they landowners here?
Yeah, they were landowners.
Former landowners?
They still own land in that area, they just reside in Charlotte.
Okay. All right, do we have any, I think we've got several citizens that have signed up to speak concerning this, and at this time, I would recognize. And at this time, I would recognize, uh, Brian Harper of nineteen fifty-three Hepseva Church Road. If you would like to come forward, and the floor is now yours, if you would like to speak concerning the relinquishing of the ETJ.
Good evening. My name is Brian Harper. I reside in nineteen fifty-three Hepseva Church Road. I have a business at twenty fifteen Hepseva Church Road, Stein Gear Company. I'm on the opposite side of the Piedmont Lithium project, uh, compared to where you're looking to relinquish, relinquish the ETJ. Uh, I just have one question, and then I need to follow it up with the, uh, county zoning. And I found, uh, why would a governmental body give up jurisdiction that would relinquish any, say, for the land residents and their properties? Um, there, I have, uh, you know, concern why a government would give up, uh, their say-so. Uh, also, just a little nervous.
Well, that's fine. Take your time.
Gaston County Code six point two point five subsection D. The, the I three district, which Piedmont Lithium will eventually ask to be rezoned, is established to provide areas for the most intensive, heavy manufacturing and extended hours of operation. Uses in this district are extremely limited to include extractive and mining uses, petroleum refining, and slaughterhouses. If, uh, also, I three districts shall not be located adjacent to any property that is zoned for residential use. So you could still have say if they got this zoned I three, which that will be what they're looking to have it zoned as in the future. Uh, I'm sure Cheriville does not want to have a huge slaughterhouse up against their welcome to Cheriville sign. The Cheriville residents deserve better, and I would hope that you would see it that way.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Harper. Uh, I would, uh, ask the question from our planning and zoning director. The land he's, uh, talking about where his business is located, is that in the buffer zone or is that in the actual, um, mining area?
I would not know that. Uh, only focus on our section of it because I have no say or power or authority in, outside of our zoning jurisdiction.
Okay.
Uh, it would be, so if I remember from speaking with Mr. Harper over the phone last week, the project, or our jurisdiction is here, and there's several, I don't know, I couldn't give you a good estimate as far as the distance was towards his property.
Mm-huh, okay. Okay, the next person that signed up to speak concerning the relinquishing of the ETJ, uh, parcels, and that is five parcels of land. It's not all of the ETJ. I do want to emphasize that. It is five certain parcels that at this time Piedmont Lithium owns at this time. Okay. All right, Mr., uh, or Dr. Dennis Bean, excuse me, doctor, uh, you have the floor now.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm the pastor at Anthony Grove Baptist Church. Our property is directly across from the property that is being considered. I've been the pastor there for twenty-four years. During that time, we have built, uh, six buildings. And every time, we have had to go to the zoning and planning board of Cheriville. We paid our permits, we got our fees. When we wanted to open a daycare, we had to come before this body and get your approval and permission to open a Christian school. We had to do the same thing. So my question is, why doesn't a, a group out of Australia get a pass? Why do they not have to get a permit? Why do they not have to have your supervision, your look at what they want to do? Now, when I called and asked, I was told that this was a buffer zone. But if you go to Lithium's plan, their website, they're putting, they're proposing putting two railroad tracks through the property in front of ours and putting a lithium hydroxide chemical plant across the street from a daycare. And you want to give up your say-so of what they can do and turn that over to Gaston County? Councilman Parker and Councilman Freeman, you have already noted that Cheriville was neglected in the twenty forty vision. As the pastor of Anthony Grove, I believe if you relinquish this, every one of those railroad cars with chemicals going in and out of that plant, you're giving up any say-so about what happens. And my question to you is, do you think the people in Belmont or Gastonia are going to care what happens across the street from Anthony Grove Baptist Church? I don't think they will. But I believe the folks in this room are sensitive to what's going to happen in our back door. These folks from Piedmont can come to you just like we did. I believe you'll give them an honest hearing, just like you gave us. And so why should they get a pass? I do not believe it's in Cheriville's best interest, it's in Anthony Grove Baptist Church's best interest to relinquish your control of the zoning and the planning of this property. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bean. Uh, do I have any other citizen that would like to speak concerning the Piedmont Lithium? Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address. Okay.
Uh, I'm Libby Carpenter, Cheriville Township, uh, four two six AdderHolt Road, Linkenton. We're in Linkenton. We have Cheriville telephone, Cheriville Township, and, um, we live in country. Thank you for your time, Mayor Bean and the city council members. My husband, Benjamin Hughes, could not be here tonight, but our property is located in a residential area in the Cheriville Township where Piedmont Lithium wants to dig four open pit mines and construct a chemical plant. And I'm asking also that you not give up your rights to zoning, and here's why. Cheriville, I know that Cheriville values faith and family. Our churches are the foundation of our faith, and as we just heard, Anthony's Grove Baptist Church is just one of the churches that will be affected by your decision tonight. I want to invite you as community leaders to think about the legacy you will leave. The Bible says in Proverbs, "A good name is more desirable than great riches. To be esteemed is better than silver or gold. A good name earned by honorable behavior, godly wisdom, moral courage, and personal integrity is more desirable than great riches." Especially as you consider the future of Cherryville and the drastic changes that Piedmont Lithium proposes to make our, to our community. Because the decisions you make about this project in the days, weeks, and months ahead could well affect the way you will be remembered. Right now, the Cheriville Township has some of the most beautiful landscapes in the area with its many forests and fields, farmlands, streams, rivers, and all manner of wildlife. Open pit mining will forever alter that landscape. Instead, there will be trucks and traffic and dust and noise and sediment pollution in our streams and rivers. When Piedmont Lithium first came to our area, they wanted to take photos of the foundations of our home inside and out. They wanted it for a baseline of damage they may cause. But good neighbors don't move into an area already knowing they're going to cause damage. Just like good city council members don't let strangers intrude into a community knowing they're going to bring destruction, not when they can do something to prevent it. That's not the kind of legacy a good city council member wants to leave behind. They don't want to leave behind vacant homes and abandoned properties, muddy water and dusty air, and a cavernous pit that looks more like it belongs on the side of the moon than on a Gaston County landscape. So tonight, my request to you, Mayor Bean and Cherryville City Council, is to think about your legacy. Think about how you will want to be remembered and be cautious because the few gains Piedmont Lithium is promising will not be worth the cost to Cheriville's quality of life or the cost to your legacy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter. Brian Skeba, let me see, see here, yeah. Okay, um, does anyone have any questions for, uh, Mr. Skeba who's here? Uh-huh. Yes, ma'am. Just please come to the podium, state your name and address.
My name is Lisa Carpenter Baldwin, and my family home is at four twenty-six AdderHolt Road in the Cheriville Township. Piedmont Lithium's proposed mine and chemical plant is a disastrous idea for Cherryville. I am asking that you do not relinquish extraterritorial jurisdiction tonight, and this is why. The area targeted by Piedmont Lithium is home to families, businesses, churches, and a thriving agriculture industry. The planned mining activity, which will use enormous amounts of water, will negatively impact the aquifer used by these good citizens. As a former economist, I am compelled to remind you of the tragedy of the commons. When a common resource like water is consumed for short-term gain, overpumping of groundwater leads to a lowering of the water table and deterioration of water quality. Essentially, the aquifer cannot refill as quickly as it's being depleted. Ultimately, the cost for Piedmont Lithium's overuse of the water is shared by all. My first point is that groundwater is not an unlimited resource. Even if municipal water lines are installed, the drought-prone area cannot support the amount of water needed for homes, farms, businesses, and the mine. In our drought-prone region, municipal water is not the answer. Even Cherryville hasn't always had enough water for its own citizens without buying it from Linkenton. Thus, we can accurately conclude the high water consumption by Piedmont Lithium would lead to devastating groundwater and natural spring depletion. In fact, half the world's population by twenty twenty-five will reside in water-stressed areas. Groundwater levels are falling globally, and depletion and pollution of groundwater is predicted to be the single greatest water resource problem in the coming thirty years. Point number two. The economic benefit to the state and the county is insignificant compared to the environmental impact of the proposed mining project. The lithium ore is not considered high-quality and requires additional and extensive excavation. Other legitimate mining companies have evaluated this site and determined that with less than three percent usable ore, it is not even economically viable. Byproducts such as arsenic from the proposed operation will threaten wildlife and impact natural springs, streams, ponds, and rivers in and around the county and adjoining watersheds. In June of last year, state mining engineer David Miller told the Mining Commission that his division is scrutinizing emerging issues related to extractive operations. Of special concern is leaching associated with lithium mining. Because lithium mining can produce arsenic, antimony, and sulfuric acid, Piedmont Lithium could also be subject to federal hazardous waste regulations. Let that sink in as you remember the hazardous waste disaster in East Palestine, Ohio last month. This brings me to my last point. Gaston County does not need another EPA superfund site like the defunct Holman Beam Lithium Mine only a few miles away. This disaster pales as insignificant compared to the expansive proposed mining project by Piedmont Lithium. But Cherryville's mission and vision statement gives me hope as you view all decisions through the lens of this statement. The city of Cherryville will be a transparent model of excellence that upholds high ethical standards and nurtures opportunities for current and future generations to live, work, play, and conduct business while maintaining our small-town character and heritage. You also set the goal of enhancing and promoting development that builds on the character and quality of Cherryville. Piedmont Lithium would challenge your high ethical standards and character and fail to meet your goal with a founder who was previously barred from the Australian Stock Exchange for stock manipulation and Piedmont Lithium's strong-arming and threatening of Cherryville residents over the past seven years. And now their business partner, Atlantic Lithium's, charges of bribing local officials at their mining site in Ghana. I have investigative reports for you that demonstrate the corruption inherent in Piedmont Lithium's business model. Mayor Bean and City Council, you've worked so hard to revitalize the historic downtown and establish the Heritage Park. Let's not churn Cherryville into the cherry pit. We don't want Cherryville's new slogan to be, "It's the pits," instead of encouraging life to blossom. I urge you to retain your jurisdiction over property that will be affected by Piedmont Lithium's plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Yes, ma'am. Please state your name and address. Thank you.
My name is Patricia Crocker, and I live at twelve forty-one St. March Church Road. I'm also the, um, pastor of children and the director at Breach of Hope Daycare at Anthony Grove Baptist Church. A year and a half ago, my family and my sister-in-law and her, um, husband and their son met with some people from the lithium plant. Patrick Rendell was there, Melissa was there, and Jim was there. As we conversed about what was going to happen and how this was going to take place, I had a question. My question to them was, is this going to, if we had a daycare and a school at Anthony Grove, what would happen? And Jim looked at me, not Jim, Patrick looked at me and said, "Well, we'd have to have a serious talk." And I said, "Would this hinder the children or hinder the parents from sending their children?" And his answer to me was yes, out of his mouth. My sister-in-law, Cindy Jenkins, asked, she lived on six hun- six oh four Anthony Grove Road, and said, "Would you live where we live?"
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't get that.
She asked, she asked them, "Would you live right now?"
Oh, okay.
Where we live, knowing what you know and how the lithium plant is going to, um, do in this community? And he told her, "No, I would not. Maybe in ten years, when everything is settled down, I would move where you are." That, Mayor and City Council, should be enough. That's coming out of their mouth. Not reports, out of their mouth, from someone who loves Cheriville, who loves children. I want to ask you something. Do you have children? Yes, I know your children. I know your grandchildren. And your grandchildren's lives and their lungs, they depend on you not letting this go through. Earlier, we heard about children being important, about having them to raise up. And our goal and our desire is for them to learn about Jesus and to grow up to be the best citizens of Cheriville that they can possibly be, fulfilling what God wants them to fulfill. Someone asked Jesus, "What is the greatest commandment?" And he said, "To love the Lord God with all your heart, all your mind, and all your strength." And the second is just as important, to love your neighbor as yourself. How can we love our neighbor and allow this to happen? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any citizen that would like to speak at this time? Okay. Well, we want to give everyone a chance. Colby? Uh, do I have, uh, Brian, would you come forward and, and tell your title and what you have to do with the ETJ?
So, I'm Brian Skeba. I'm the Planned Growth and Development Manager for Gaston County. So, um, over building inspections, zoning, and planning. So, I'm over building inspections, zoning, planning, natural resources, and have been kind of designated as the project lead for Piedmont, everything that is Piedmont Lithium within Gaston County. So, I came up tonight not to, to get involved in y'all's process, but just to be here in case you had questions about what would happen if you did decide to relinquish your process to us. So, I'm here for any questions that council may have in regards to that.
Okay.
I got one. I'd just like to ask you, what advantage and what is the county getting out of this? What is, what is y'all's advantage of having this property and what are you getting, county getting out of this?
So, as far as the rezoning process goes, I would say we have not negotiated anything with the rezoning process to know if there will be anything that has gotten or given us part of this, as far as whether there's going to be water lines that have to be ran or whether there's going to be sewer extensions, what, all the things that would go along with development. As far as the process is concerned, what I, what I would, the only piece of advice, and I'm not an attorney, so I would say to, to talk to your, to y'all's attorney. What I would say is that when we knew Piedmont Lithium was, was coming, we stopped our, we stopped our process, put in a moratorium on zoning and refurbished our land use ordinance because it was lacking, to be perfectly honest. There just wasn't enough inside of our ordinance to, to govern mining. And so, we stopped and put those, those guidelines in place just in case, because at this point, no decision has been made whether we will approve it or we will not approve it. But what we did know is, is we didn't have the guidelines in place to do either at that point. So, my caution would be is if you decide to keep it, then that would be the first place I would go and look, is at my ordinance and know what I have to actually govern it or not govern it.
What would be the benefit to Piedmont for us relinquishing?
So, the only thing that I can think of is, is it would streamline the process for them and go down to, to one process rather than, than two. It would also, I mean, you're, you're dealing with a council here and a, and a council in Gaston County. So, you, you take the likelihood of being turned down once and having to revamp your plan or twice or whatever have you. So, it puts another, another step in the process for them.
One time they told us they might, they might be interested in being annexed, and now they're wanting us to relinquish it altogether.
Yeah.
I don't understand.
So, you're saying that if we do relinquish the ETJ, that in turn takes Cherryville out of the equation of whether or not they, they are permitted, period? That, then it would put it in the county sands and whatever the county says, then Cherryville wouldn't have anything to do with it? Is that correct?
That's correct, 100%.
Okay, now, my next question is, you mentioned Gastonia Council. They're not going to have any say, so would it not be the county commissioners?
Yes, sir. I may have, I may have misspoken.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure that's, that's who would be making-
Please get that on the record.
Okay.
It just bothers me that we've had this for years and years and years, and all of a sudden, the county wants it, and you're wanting it for some reason, maybe other than-
Let me, let me, let me be perfectly clear.
Y'all can change it. If we happen to do this, you can change this and do anything y'all want it to.
Let me, let me be perfectly clear, and I, and I talked to Alex and Mr. Dalton. We're not here to advocate towards either side of this. This is strictly a decision by this council. I am here for, for informational purposes only. I am not here to advocate that we want it or, or that we do not want it. I'm just here for information, and, and that's, that's the truth. We want y'all to make the decision for y'all.
Right.
And I'm here to give you the information that you may need for that.
Let me ask you another question. If, if we did not approve it-
Yes, sir.
-the county did not approve it, could the state or the federal government override us?
So, I, I've been asked that question a lot throughout this process, and, and what I would say is, is I don't, I don't know the answer to that. I would say that gambling is not legal in the state of North Carolina, and I can drive you to two casinos in a very short amount of time. So, so having said that, the answer to that is, I don't know.
In other words, they can do anything they want to.
I, I would say, what I would say is, is there's a lot of conjecture with that, and people think things are already done, people would think things are kind of going on in the background. I, I have not been a part of any of that, I've not seen a part of any of that. The process is going through like I think it is intended to go through. They are, they are going through their mining permits with the state. What I would say to that is, is if you read the state statutes on mining permits, the state statute says, "A mining permit shall be issued when." So, there's a, there's steps that have to be gone through, and then a permit will be issued once those steps are gone through. When it gets to the zoning level is where the control is at. So, I would say that if the council wants that control for their people, then zoning is where that control is, is had. But you need to have rules in place to do that. I think currently, correct me if I get off here, I think currently, right now, you have a special-use permit that is how mining gets done in Cherryville. Well, those are, that is a state statute-guided process that says, as long as you can prove these findings of facts, that you have to issue that permit. Piedmont Lithium is going to give you those findings of facts. They will have experts that will stand up and give you those findings of facts. This board is a decision-making body. You can't put on those findings of facts. So, you're going to be reliant on someone else to come and present the other side to that case, and if they do not, then you're stuck with making the decision based off of the information that you have. So, like I said, I'm not a lawyer, do not play one on TV. So, get legal advice on that before you make this decision.
So, there's a lot of information we've got to dig into because you're saying, I mean, we're only talking about this few parcels of land. There's a lot of ETJ out there that it's almost like they're just spotting this and wanting to take that away from us.
So, this is, the reason this is coming up is because it is part of the mining permit that Piedmont Lithium has already applied for with the state, and it is, it is inside of their, the permit boundary that they have already given to the state of North Carolina. And that's why it's not the whole ETJ.
Just remember, this is, what is it, 130-some acres or about 3,500 total?
About 500 acres total.
Yes. I think their, I think their mining permit is about 1,500 acres. I think their mining permit is about 1,500 acres, so this is 130-something of the 1,500 acres.
Okay.
But do they not own around 3,500 total?
They, they do, but I'm guessing on that part. I'll, I'll take your word on that part, but they're, so the, the mining permit that they, they applied for at the state of North Carolina only encompasses about 1,500 acres.
Okay.
This is only for 137 acres.
Yeah, of course-
137 acres is where the chemical plant is going to be.
That's what we're related to.
Yeah, we realize that the majority of it is the buffer zone, that, that's where the mining will actually take place, is within that. Do we have representative from Piedmont Lithium here?
Yes, sir.
Would you come up and state your name and your title?
My name is Monique Parker. I'm the Senior Vice President of Safety, Environmental, and Health for Piedmont Lithium. So, there's a couple of things I want to address, and then I'm happy to answer any other questions that you may have. First and foremost, recently, we were just talking about land ownership. Our mine permit boundary is 1,548 acres. So, that is the acreage within the mine permit boundary that is with the state mining dimmer office for our mining license, or our mining permit. Obviously, as noted, there are other properties around the area that we own, but that is the area that is currently in the mine permit boundaries. Another statement that was made was around permitting versus zoning. The zoning, the rezoning activity, whether it's with you all, city of Cherryville, or with Gaston County, does not impact our ability to obtain our mine permit. So, that, those are two separate activities, so I just want to make that clear to everyone that they are completely separate. We could still get our mine permit, but then we still have to go through the zoning, and we've selected to wait till we have that mine permit to rezone any of that 1,500-plus acres. There were other things that have been noted by other citizens that I'd like to address. The other was about train, obviously. Well, let me go back. The acreage that we're talking about, the area that's in the five parcels, that is not going to be any mining activities whatsoever. So, as noted, it is on the chemical plant side, but the chemical plant itself is not within those five parcels either as today, our current planning. There is the train that passes through that, so all of those things are accurate and correct. The train itself, it was, you know, noted that, you know, what's going on in Ohio that could happen here. We will not use the train to bring in hazardous materials, so we're not going to have chemicals that are brought in on that train that are going to be hazardous or flammable and those types of things. We're going to utilize that train to bring in soda ash and lime. Those are actually common chemicals that you use in your home today to clean and cook, baking soda. So, you know, what's coming in is not some of those same chemicals that you've seen in the news in other areas. Air was mentioned. You know, obviously, there's a daycare there, close to where the area is, there's churches, there's residents. Oh, I'm sorry. So, there's a school. So, I just want to be clear, we have a lot of restrictions that we have around us. Those 1,500 acres, we have to go through stringent permitting, not only with the mine body, but with air, with water, in order to even be able to put our plan into place. We have to do stringent modeling that shows what is the extent and what are the pollutants that will be at our property line. If we don't meet certain restrictions at the property line, then they will tell us no for the air permit. Those things have already been reviewed, and we've provided it to them, and they are going through that process to whether grant or, you know, ask us to make some modifications. But any, any emissions that comes past the property line is already within ambient conditions of the air that the children, the area, the citizens are already breathing. So, we're not going to have any contaminants of air outside our property line. And what we do create, we have robust emission control equipment in place that has to get it to a certain level, again, from an air permitting perspective. Talking about water, I know that's, let me go back to one other thing, hazardous waste. I know it was mentioned about, you know, what we're going to do is create hazardous waste. Our entire process does not create hazardous waste. We, the only minor hazardous waste we may create is in our lab environment where various testings are done, and it will be in very small quantity. So, it's not like we're going to be this major hazardous waste generator because there are various levels, and again, permitting that has to go through to obtain the ability to create and dispose of that off-site. I'm going to go to water because I know that's a very big topic, whether it's groundwater, whether it's leachate, whether it's arsenic levels within the water. Obviously, there's naturally occurring arsenic in the water here, which everyone is fully aware of. That's not breaking news or anything. But at the same time, we've had to do studies to understand the levels of what's happening today. We haven't even broken ground, and we understand and know, you know, what those levels are. We also understand what we're going to do and how we're going to impact that. Our process does not introduce arsenic, and it is not a byproduct of what we do. So, we're not going to create arsenic and add it to what's going on today. But what we will do is, we're going to take it, we're going to use water, we're going to treat it, and we're going to give it back, a lot of times, a lot cleaner than how we even receive it. So, we're going to do, we're going to make improvements and not make negative impacts to the environment.
Can I stop you there one minute?
Yes, sir.
I know this council has discussed this several times. I've never gotten a definite answer on this, so I'm going to ask you now, where will you purchase water for Piedmont Lithium?
Thank you for asking that question. So, from a water perspective, we're currently, I think everybody, I hope everyone is aware, we're currently working with Gaston County to have what I think is a SOQ, but we're getting proposals from engineers. So, we're working with the county to have an engineering company come and design. The plan, even in that request for proposal, is that the water will come from city of Gastonia, it will come through Cherryville, and then come to us. So, that's even what we've put into the request for proposal, for them to design, is for that process to work that way. We've met with city of Gastonia, we've met with Gaston County, we've met with city of Cherryville, and that was the process we agreed to, and that's what we're currently working through today.
Okay.
Can I ask you a couple of questions?
Yes, sir.
How long have you been with Lithium?
One year and a half.
What's your background qualifications?
I'm a chemical engineer. I obtained my chemical engineering degree from Tennessee Tech in Cookeville, Tennessee. I've been doing environmental health and safety for almost 20 years. I was previously with Albemarle before joining Piedmont.
Good, thank you.
Okay, you can continue.
Okay. The last thing I was mentioning was around groundwater. Obviously, when we start mining, there will be impacts to groundwater in regards to, you open the ground up, the water's going to come in. I mean, I think that everyone's fully aware of that. We've had to do extensive studies to understand what we call the cone of depression. So, once we open that mine, where will the water come from? What, how far, what's the extent? And there's a lot of modeling that goes into that. That model is just being finished, and so we will be able to generate that report and provide to you all, to the county, whoever wants to see it, so that you understand that. What we do know today is, because of the geography, if you will, of the underground surfaces, there's not just one big pool of water that everybody pulls from. There's aquifers, there's dikes, there's fractures that separate the water aquifer. So, just because we may pull in one area doesn't mean we're going to pull from the whole region. But this study will allow us to see what that impact will be, how far it will go, and how much we will impact the water table. So, for us to give you that answer today, I can't with any amount of confidence what that looks like, but we are doing those stringent studies to be able to answer those questions, not only for ourselves, but for the citizens in the area, because if we're going to make an impact, we'd like to know today versus later. One of the things in our mine permit application that we had to do was a well mitigation plan. We know this region, everyone is on well, so if we impact a well, what are we going to do? We've had to answer that question. Our plan says, we'll either dig a deeper well, we'll provide municipal water since we have to bring it out to this area anyway, and there's other opportunities we may have, and we would have discussions with those residents one-on-one to understand what's the best solution for them. But I'm happy to answer any questions you have, and if I haven't, you know, mentioned something that someone has a question about, I'm open to that as well.
How does the city of Cherryville and its residents benefit by relinquishing this ETJ?
One of the main benefits, obviously, as we've talked about before, is jobs. We're looking to bring over 400 jobs to this area, so that's one major impact to this region, the economy, the workforce, you know, just other businesses that will benefit from that. The other big impact that we'll have by bringing this here is-
I'm saying, how do we, if we give up this control, how do we benefit?
Well, you're going to benefit. I mean, even if you give up the control, people are still going to be coming to your-
Even if we don't give up control, and it comes to jobs and all that, still coming.
Correct. They're coming regardless of whether you give it up.
So, we don't benefit at all by relinquishing this control?
Well, by relinquishing it, from a standpoint of your benefit, we've talked about, I've mentioned the jobs, like you said, they're coming anyway. We were looking at municipal water coming to this area, the benefit that you'll have from the water that, you know, not only we'll use, but others in the area.
We get that anyway. What, what difference is it going to make whether we relinquish or not? Yeah, that's, that's what-
I, I think, let me see if I can clarify this a little bit. So, they're saying, if we do relinquish it, then you're going to go to the county and ask to be permitted to mine. Their decision will take Cherryville out of the equation completely, correct? Okay. If they do not permit you, or permit you to mine, would you in turn come back to Cherryville and maybe even ask for annexation or ask the city to permit you? Would, would that be an alternative if, in fact, Gaston County would turn you down for mining permit?
I can't speak to what that may look like. I mean, obviously, that's definitely an option, but whether or not we will do, we haven't had those discussions internally with the organization. For me to be able to say, most definitely, that's our Plan B, or that's whatever we would do, but that is definitely an option that we're aware of.
Okay. Okay. Does any council member have any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Now, it means questions of qualifications, I just-
No.
I want to make sure we weren't talking to some marketing person.
I understand and respect that completely. No worries. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
State your name and address, please.
My name is Nancy Choka, and I live at 1821 St. Mark's Church Road. My land is actually right abuts the land that Piedmont Lithium has already purchased. My intention for that land when I moved here was to grow apples and have an apple farm- My intention for that land when I moved here was to grow apples and have, uh, an apple farm. Um, I only moved here a couple of years ago, so I'm a little different from the other people that have spoken who have grown up in this area and been here for a long time. I moved here because I really liked the area. I liked the idea that Gaston County was agricultural-based. It led into my retirement plans of having a farm and being able to be in nature and the beauty that it brings all around us. You know, the animals, the wildlife, the, the community, the agricultural small-town community that you just don't get, uh, in a lot of other places. And I've moved around a lot. I was in, worked for the federal government and I was in the army. So I've moved around a lot from place to place, small towns and big cities. And nothing beats a small town. Everybody knows everybody, everybody cares about each other. When you invite strangers in, you usually sort of vet them out to make sure that they have the same values. I can tell you that I've never seen in all of my years a corporation that has the same values as residents and small-town people. I understand that Piedmont Lithium is trying to sell this idea that they're going to build these, these pit mines and that that's not going to be harmful. But we know that this isn't true. We've seen this throughout history for centuries where projects like this occur and they're, they're never beneficial. And if they are, it's usually a sma- a small amount. So for example, lithium mining, if they come in and they mine this lithium, they're going to pull it all out and then they're going to go when they're done. And they're going to leave behind this open pit mine and a just depressed community because they're not going to bring in more work and more money. Everybody throws out the jobs, all the corporations, they throw out the job numbers and everything. Doesn't always meet that, it usually doesn't. But we do know from other lithium mining and other places in the world and even in this country, that is not a very safe process. And it does affect the community around them and the environment around them. And for someone like me who moved here with this dream of, of having an apple farm and, and sort of finally getting to do something where I can get my hands dirty in the, in the ground, I, I, I'm very nervous about how, whether I'm going to even be able to grow apple trees. And I know that the gentle lady just said, you know, it's not going to affect the groundwater. Well, everything affects the groundwater when it comes to that. I mean, we, we know this to be true. But they'll be long gone when those effects really start to have a great impact, and we need to consider that. So I'm asking you, please don't give up your authority here. Because if you do, you're just letting them sort of like steamroll over this community. And even if they end up being able to do what they want to do, shouldn't we at least put up the fight? Like our founders of this nation who believed that the strongest power was at the lowest level in the individuals and the small communities and not up at the higher levels where they don't really care about the people that they're sort of lording their authority over? That's all I ask. Please don't give up your authority here because we really are depending on you to protect our way of life here.
Okay.
Thank you.
I have one question for you, and it, it doesn't affect our judgment on this. I was just wondering, did Piedmont Lithium approach you to purchase your land?
Uh, no, I have not had anybody specifically approached me. They just send me stuff in the mail, like cookies and coffee, and tell me to call them so that we can meet. And I'm not interested in that because I have a plan for my land, so...
Okay, fine. Okay. Thank you, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on at this time. Um, I think we've got a lot that we have to digest. Uh, Al.
I have a question, or I have a short statement. That, um, the lithium, as I've always said, will be mined. Now, who will mine it is a question. Is it going to, are you going to entrust a corporation to do that? Because we haven't done anything with it individually for years. Since what, seven, or eighteen sixty-one, when it was first determined that it was really lithium? But I'm sure our ancestors knew well before then that it was, um, something different about the ground. And, um, but the, the ground, the lithium in the ground will be mined. What's the atomic number is five for lithium?
Three.
Three. So we're talking about really a, a, and it has become a rare earth mineral. They don't technically classify that, but it's a unique, highly-wanted, uh, mineral, and it will be mined. So do you allow that a corporation that's then controlled by the county, that's controlled by the state, that's controlled by the federal government? Or does the federal government step in? And they take it over and you have no, no recourse with it? Look at Hanford, Washington. Look at other places that are sites that the federal government went in and did. Look at Camp Lejeune. They're, they're paying, they're paying money for soldiers that had to drink the water down there. So, um, again, the, the benefit of this pulling it together is what I personally see is that it makes it one jurisdiction to deal with. And Cherryville is not going to be, have any jurisdictional control over really any of the operations. It's all buffer property. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Putman. Okay, at this time, um, I would entertain a motion from council to exit our public hearing at this time.
Make a motion to exit public hearing second.
Have a motion in second to exit, um, public hearing at this time. So we are now out of public hearing. Um, now we're open for any discussion from council regarding the matter. Uh, w- we've had a, a lot to di- digest, to be honest with you. There's been a lot said tonight. Uh, my opinion, I think we're premature on making any decision at this time. Uh, I think we need to study it a little further, uh, get some more information both ways. And, uh, I would like for council at this time to, uh, maybe even entertain a motion that we table this until, uh, next council meeting on April tenth.
Make a motion to table it to April tenth.
Have a motion and a second to table any further, uh, decision on relinquishing of the ETJ until next council meeting on April tenth. Uh, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed? Be it noted, we had one opposition to the motion. Okay, so it will be tabled until April tenth at our next, uh, regular scheduled council meeting. All right, we'll move on to item twelve. And, uh, this is consideration to set a date for public hearing. And this is in reference to proposed murals and sidewalk painting ordinances. And our marketing coordinator, Steve Pantin, is here. And, uh, Steve, you now have the floor now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Again, you've just stated it, so just like to make a recommendation to the council that you conduct a public meeting at your next regular council meeting regarding, number one, the murals ordinance, uh, that we discussed a, a few, a few minutes ago. The murals concept plan for the central business district, as well as the, the one-line ordinance regarding prohibiting marking on the sidewalks. My recommendation to you is to consider it maybe on your April tenth meeting for, uh, public...
Okay. Did all councilmen understand that, that, uh, that our public hearing will be set for April tenth, right, next council meeting? Okay, do, uh, I have that in the form of a motion?
Make a motion to set the date at our next council meeting with April tenth.
Have a motion in a second to set the date for public hearing in regards to the proposed bureau and sidewalk painting ordinances for April tenth. Okay, all in favor of this motion, please say aye. All opposed? There is none, it's unanimous. Thank you, Steve. Okay, next item on our agenda is citizens to be heard. And citizens that would like to speak may do so by coming to the podium, stating your name and address before you speak. And comments will be strictly held to five minutes. So at this time, I will call the names that were given to me in order that they were presented to our certified municipal clerk. First person to speak will be Carl Dillinger. And those that have signed up to speak, please do remember that no action is going to be taken on the museum at this meeting. So this is strictly for information.
I live at, uh, one oh one Meredith Drive. It's right off Neiman's Cove. My name's Carl Boozy Dillinger, and I'm an aspiring city council member. There you go. At times, I'm going to be speaking directly to you, and sometimes I won't be speaking to you. Your conscience has got to be your guide. Okay, first of all, I'm referring back to the last time I spoke here in February as a council about, uh, questions I had concerning O'Leary's board members and their future plans. And, uh, and, you know, if, if O'Leary had a bad fate, what would be the contingency? Does the board members have any replies to any of those questions that I ask?
I think the answer to that would be with any corporation, any business. You know, what happens if, uh, Tim Moss and myself are killed in a car accident? Who takes over? So, you know, some of it, you're not going to have a direct answer to it.
Oh, I, I, I understand that for sure, but there's no, nobody questions nothing. They were talking about, uh, like that lithium mine coming in here, you invite a stranger in and then, you know, where are you at next round?
So I, I have asked Mr. O'Leary what would happen if he passed away. And he does have heirs, and they would basically inherit a cash cow that he is amassing for them. And they would basically retain all the property and receive checks from all the rentals for, I guess, the rest of their lives.
Yeah, well, you know, if and and when, but that, in a situation where somebody's taking over the city, there needs to be something in writing. I mean, I might be an idiot, but I ain't getting hung up in this. I mean, you know, you can have partners and everything else, but it's just, there's no contingency, contingency. A future event or circumstances, which is possible, but cannot be predicted, and an unforeseen event. There's, there's too many scenarios out here, and y'all know where I'm coming from. But anyway, it is what it is, and we're going to come with it. And Gary, uh, what, what's your opinion on the dog park?
You talking about Westgate?
Right. I mean, will you be voting on that?
I have really bad decisions at this point.
But you had talked about recusing yourself because of something about your brother.
Oh, that's right. Yeah, yeah.
Right, well, you know, that's, that's a noble cause. But I'm sitting right here, and like I said, I, I'm left with a bag of rocks and I got to start throwing them to Pimacilla. But John, your work, your, John, your wife works directly for Vicky Sparling Realty, does she not?
Yes, she does.
Okay, it, you know, it's, it's not like she works on the north dock and you, and Vicky works on the south dock. They're literally this close every day, in that little building over where they work. Okay, that, uh, Vicky makes money from these purchases with O'Leary and that mu- and other buildings and stuff. But that money goes directly to paying your wife, does it not?
I don't know what Vicky does with her money. She pays my wife. Uh, they, they manage a lot of properties. She owns a lot of properties.
Yeah.
As long as my wife does not stand to gain financially directly from this sale, I have the right to vote and will not recuse myself.
Okay, well, how, how, how can you...
I've spoken to attorney who has told me that...
Well, you're going to be speaking to some more. But how can you vote in an unbiased manner with the possible repu- you know, repercussion of your vote costing her her job? You voting on the, you're not qualified to vote on this. I don't give a damn what attorney you talk to or whatever. This ain't right. It's a conflict of interest up one side and down the other. And I ain't the only one saying that, trust me. It is what it is.
You have your opinion.
You got it, brother, and so does the rest of the council members. The cit- the, the council members up here were voted on and put in by the citizens to represent the six thousand one hundred seventy-four citizens in this community. And what I'm seeing is a select few people are being represented instead of the majority. Majority, the greater number. It is where it is. This, this man has...
Four people have told me they didn't want me to sell this building.
Well, you need to get in touch, brother.
Well, they got my phone number. It's public record.
Yeah.
Nobody's called me.
But anyway, this building that's up here, by the time the money's getting where it is right now, there's a building right beside of it that could be bought and done. Why this building? That's my thing again. And why does everybody kiss O'Leary's rear? He has gotten to the point now to where he owns enough property and stuff that he can start bucking the citizens and the board on this. It's where it's at. It's like they were talking earlier about the lithium crowd. But, uh, I just, I, I don't think that, that there's a reason for him to be able to come in here and unabated buy up everything there are. I mean, I need an extension.
Let me ask you one last question.
Go for it, brother.
Can I ask you one last question? Did you offer to sell Mr. O'Leary your building?
No. And you know what? Vicky told me he wasn't even interested in that. And it was a lie. Write it down. No, Brian came up there and asked me about, I told him I'd give him the damn building. I know, I told him I'd give him, give him the building to open a restaurant, to leave this one alone. That's where I'm at, and I ain't through.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dillinger. Okay, uh, next person that's, uh, signed up to speak is Hilda R. Bates. Hilda, you have the floor at this time.
I'm Hilda Bates. I reside at seven ten East Main Street here in Cherryville. Of course, I think Mr. Dillinger covered most of the, my thoughts as well. Um, one thing I am concerned about is I'm hearing rumors that the building needs a lot of repairs. That's needs to be addressed, you know, before whether the city keeps it or if it's sold or whatever. And I think most of us here tonight have had an increase in our tax evaluation for the county. I know mine went up over a hundred thousand dollars. The tax money that the city's going to receive from the increase in our, in our properties, that money I think should be able to be put into a budget. And the budget needs to be addressed to repairs for the city to take care of the, uh, museum. And that's where I, that's where I'm coming from. I don't think the museum needs to be sold. I think that you can take the things that are in the museum, you can take the pictures out, you can take... But you can't redo the building itself. The building's historical. You can't take the jail. You can't take the, you can't take upstairs where the court was. If he wants a restaurant, he's got other properties that he needs to put it in. And I don't think the citizens of Cherryville should be denied their history. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Uh, next person, Teresa McFarlane.
Good evening, mayor and council members. I'm Teresa McFarlane. I reside at Gaston County. You have my address, but I'm the owner of one twenty-four West Main. I'm here because I don't want you to sell the museum. I have been approached to represent someone to do an upset bid. I made them quite aware that even though this is my livelihood, that I don't know that I could represent them fairly because I don't want you to sell. I did some research since the last council meeting, and thank you, Paige, for, for, um, giving me some information. I did request information on a closed meeting and was told after six months it could be released, but you all haven't voted on that. So I wasn't privy to see all the information I requested. But I did some own, I did my own digging. And I did, I do own the building alone, which is kind of funny because it's a wonderful life. I'm not an O'Leary fan either. I've been in litigation with him. It's cost me fifty thousand dollars. I'm not a fan. But let me share with you guys something that happened in two thousand nineteen and bring back some memories. You all turned down, and I'm going to spell this, G R U P P O E T I C O L L C, Mr. Dennis Licardia, who made an offer for one hundred South Main in the fall of two thousand nineteen in a closed session meeting for three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. I found out that you accepted Mr. O'Leary's bid... I found out that you accepted Mr. O'Leary's bid for $150,000. In my opinion, shortchanging the fine citizens of Cherryville $200,000. Per his plans, he had plans to do a rooftop bar, to do, and if I'm not mistaken, he, in the agreement, there was something about doing some handicap renovations to City Hall. He wanted an event space. He was gonna have apartments and restaurants and retail on the lower level. Had he been the, the one that had gotten the, the bid, he had plans for everything to be completed by 2023. So, that didn't happen. Mr. O'Leary bought the building. My office is catty-corner from that property, and to my, you all know more than I do, but from my perspective, nothing's been done to that building, like the building beside of my office. He's owned it for a while. Nothing's been done to that building. So, my concern for selling the museum is even, what was her name that just spoke?
Bates.
No, not Hilda. I'm in agreement with that. The YMCA lady was mentioned in the.
Sharon Patchett.
Thank you, in the 2040 plan. She mentioned museums. She mentioned all these things for quality of life. I came up here this past Saturday because I wanted to document some of that for my grandchildren, because I don't know what the future holds. It's in y'all's hands. But I hope you guys make a diligent decision, and I hope you don't let Mr. O'Leary turn out to be Mr. Potter, because I own the building alone now, and I'm gonna oppose it. Y'all have a good night.
Let me, please.
Thank you.
That, that offer we had for $350,000.
He couldn't get the money.
He wanted us to finance it for him.
Yeah.
From my understanding and talking with the powers that be, that was one of the solutions. He did ask for some city financing, but I was told he was turned down, and then Mr. O'Leary was entertained.
He asked for 100% financing.
Yeah, he could not, the, the banks would not loan him the money.
So he wanted us to.
So he wanted us to finance the building for him.
But you did have a $350,000 offer, and you accepted $150,000.
It's not an offer when you don't come up with any money.
Okay, we have one more that's signed up. That's Al Putnam.
Well, I've yet to be contacted. Again, my name is Al Putnam, 209 North Jacob Street, and I am president of the Cherryville Historic Association and Museum. I've not been contacted as president of that organization by this city of what your intentions are. You've just decided to thumb your nose at us. Your openness, your transparency doesn't exist. You've tried for two and a half years to do that, and I'm, I'm gonna stop there, you know? But what I'd like to do is I would like to tell you that the state of the museum is in great shape, is in wonderful shape. So we have a new board, we have new year, we have a positive environment. We have a new era for growth, for stability, prosperity, preservation, and return to our method, or return to our mission to be able to, to preserve that heritage. We're financially sound, and we have fought to try to get an audit done. We have one scheduled, and that'll go back for a number of years with that. We also have retained an attorney to take care of some personal issues that got brought up into it, and we are aggressively going after that negative comments and everything with that. We also have been in consultation with Jim Ferguson, Julius Chambers, and Gertrude Sumter. I think the city knows well about who they are. They've had dealings with this, with this attorney firm. So we're in consultation with them. So we're doing a lot of legwork, and I just wanna share something for you tonight. The building isn't yours to give away. The building isn't for yours, you to sell. And because a prominent city official has written that, that Lester's desire to either convey the building directly to the association or to City of Cherryville, since the association had not secured its exempt status, well, the exempt status went back to 1984, so this is dated in 2000. So, is not secure, it's exempt from Internal Revenue. And so since the association has not secured its exemption from the Internal Revenue Service, it was decided that the title of the property would be conveyed to the city with the understanding that it would be used as a museum. Mr. Chambers and Gertrude.
I have a question for you, Mr. Putnam. I'd like for you to answer this. Did city manager Dalton, councilman Parker, and myself come to one of your meetings and extend our hand out to help with the problem that was going on with the board? And did you not vote to not have anything at all to do with the city of Cherryville? Is that correct?
No, it's not. We're not going to give a government majority rule over an organization. Who in the world would let the city council here, and we've seen what they've done in the past and everything else, have control over a museum? They don't, you don't belong in history. I mean, you don't belong in the history business.
So what has the city done that's detrimental to the museum? I mean, we give you free rent, we give you free utilities.
That was all in the 99-year agreement that was, that was, that has been purged from the museum. All that information, and gotta go to Joe Billy Putnam's files to take a look at what was really actually said, because all of that had been, had been purged. I don't know if you know this directly or not, but yeah, on that day also, sir, did you not, did you not threaten to shut the museum down, lock everybody out, and threaten to arrest? Yep.
I don't recall that.
Well, the other board members definitely.
Do you have that in your minutes? Do you have that in the minutes? You don't even keep minutes, do you?
No, we keep minutes.
You, you weren't keeping them that day?
Well, I would, I would take, take exception to that, because.
What was the vote for when the city? I told you we were extending, that, the reason we were there was to help the museum. That's the words I used. We want to help you. And what was the vote for then? What did you vote on?
We voted on not, to not allow the city council to, or the city government, to appoint three members of five members to the board, giving you authority. And if we had done that, that museum would've been long gone, and we know it. And it just makes us.
If you'd have done that, we wouldn't be where we are today.
Well, we, we will see.
I have your current lease agreement right here from 2003. It is valid and is still. So I've got it. That stuff hadn't been lost. It's signed by Joe Bill Putnam. This is the.
What about the 99-year agreement that was before that?
This was 2003. This one took place of that one.
And nobody ever can provide that, so.
I want to say one thing, Mr. Putnam. Two, when we had the work session that we had the offer brought to us, I know Linda Berger is a friend of mine, and we're in church together, and I knew about it. I talked to her. I come to find out, I didn't know that the new election and what had been done, but I told her I'd like to have lunch with her, and we, the work session was on Tuesday night, and on Thursday, we had lunch, and I discussed everything that went on at that work session. Now, if she was an officer, just like herself, I don't know why y'all don't know that, but I know you've been really critical about.
Because you, you've put her into a position where she's not, where she doesn't want to be. And, and she, I'm sorry?
She's a vice president on your board.
Well, sure she is. But she's putting up, but you've put her, you've put her in a situation where she doesn't want to deal with it.
She doesn't like controversy.
Doesn't like controversy. That's one, that's, that's wonderful, you know? And so she hasn't been involved, and she's been granted a, a leave of absence as long as she wants to have associated with this situation.
May I ask one question, mayor?
Yes.
And this question's for you, Mr. Putnam. Do you think it's fair that the city of Cherryville, the council, does not have any representation, representation on your board, but yet we gave you $48,000 last summer? Is that responsible?
You gave us $48,000? No, you didn't give us $48,000.
We, you didn't do work on that building?
You did work on the building, but that's what your, that's what your desires are. I mean, that's what your, that's what your charter is, to do it, to make sure that that is and it to remain a museum in perpetuity.
But that's taxpayer dollars. Do you not think we ought to have some representation on that board? Simple question. You ask your name.
Some, yeah, some. Not the majority.
Why didn't you vote for it?
Not the majority.
Last thing on me, in reference to John's question about selling that building, O'Leary and Vicki made me an offer on numerous properties, like a million dollars or whatever, and I never even called them back. So that goes to cover that. And we can smile all we want, you look prettier when you smile, John.
And for the record, I was made an offer on my building, and I rejected, and I will not sell to Mr. O'Leary.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary, in defense of Mr. O'Leary, he's not here, and he's getting bombarded from a lot of people. He has spent over $4 million in our city. I would venture to say I don't know any other individual that has spent that kind of money. Have you seen the new mural that's on the building beside, in the parking lot of the YMCA? What did he get out of that? Tell me how he's making money on that. He put that new mural up, paid for it, and there's no revenue coming from that. I, I mean, a lot of the stuff he's done, he's just done down the goodness of his heart. Did people question the Stoos in Gastonia when they ran everything in Gastonia and owned practically half the town? Nobody questioned the Stoos when they did that, because they were spending money for the city. If, if you think he's out to get the city, I, I don't understand how you can think that. When he's spending his money, he's investing, when you're not, you're not putting a bid there, you're not spending your money, nobody else in here is spending their money. He's willing to take that gamble that he's gonna get that money back eventually, and that he's helping the city out at the same time. So I would have to go to his defense since he's not here.
Just like Silicon Valley Bank, let's go to their defense.
Well, he, he gave that museum $117,000 cash money.
And so you're gonna take that money and spend it for lawyers to fight the city? Do you think that's right, to take his money, 'cause you don't have any other money, other than Bob Barker's money, which he gave you to redo the jail? Have you redone the jail?
The board of directors.
How are you gonna pay for these lawyers? Who's paying for the lawyers? That's my question. Who's paying for the lawyers you intend to fight the city with?
The board's paid for the lawyers.
Out of your pocket?
The lawyer.
Out of whose money? Where are you getting money? Julius Chambers is not cheap, I can tell you that.
There needs to be checks and balances on anything from lithium to anything that's going on.
That's what we were trying to do with the museum. All we were asking is, let us see where you're spending your money, what you're taking in, where it's going. We do it with ABC Board. We appoint members to the ABC Board. They're an entity of the city. All we do is have them to report to us on an audit, an annual audit every year, and tell us where the money's being spent.
Six million dollar question. If the whole board resigned over there, where would we start at?
Which board?
They're not going to.
If the whole board at the museum resigned, where would we start?
We'd take applications for new board members?
Just like we do for ABC Board members. There's an application, our city clerk has it. Anyone in here can go fill out that application and say they want to serve as a member of the Cherryville Historical Museum.
And that's government tyranny, that what has happened to that museum and the museum board. And y'all are the ones that have made sure that it happens. Again, you don't have the right to sell the building.
I'm sure, I mean, I was for the museum, obviously. There was a resolution right here between y'all and this crowd, right here, and everybody resigned. Can we keep the museum, or has O'Leary got you by the tail? I mean, and I'm not, you know, I'm just using metaphors, but.
First of all, we're not dissolving the museum. We're merely relocating it. We're not dissolving the museum.
And anybody can upset the bid. The bid can be upset by anybody.
If I bought the museum last minute deal, bomber, and the newspaper, me, I sing that old hell look. You look, I mean, you know, the thing says that you've got to relocate the museum, you know what I'm saying? But if I bought it, I wouldn't have to relocate it, would I?
No.
Okay, because there's so many stone locks, I, I didn't watch that much Barnaby Jones.
And, and Michael, and Mike Jones, last time, said that, or has made some indications that it's play money? No, it's not play money. Go talk to City Bank today. What, what's on their screens? What's on their IVR about what currency valuations they are?
So you got $3 million that you can buy the museum?
I'm sorry?
You have $3 million?
I have, I have, I have an individual that will put a trust together, and that trust will buy that building for $3 million.
Well, the bids are open. The bids are open. They're open right now. You can bid on it.
The day was actually the last day we'll have to run it.
Well, it'll be, it'll be an upset bid.
So you had two bids, so as long as you continue to have two bids, it'll stay open.
Yes, that's correct.
But the other issue is it's not transparent. It's like.
No, no, it's, it's not, it's not sealed bids. It's not sealed bids. Attorney will tell you that.
Yeah, it's sealed.
Well, I think it was said that it was a sealed bid, that they wouldn't, you wouldn't divulge the information from the last ones, that they were all supposed to be held to the end and then released.
It's sealed if you choose to sell. People that do not choose to sell them do not have.
The current bid is $250,000. It's the current bid, and it will be in the paper, not this Wednesday, but next. Is that correct?
Yes, correct.
Who's that from? Mr. O'Leary.
The man that Vicki said wasn't interested in. Out of her mouth, not mine. I make a motion, we adjourn.
I just, I just, I just want to ask a question, is, and I'm cutting right through the chairs. Is the reason that you are entertaining, and I want, I want to answer.
Okay.
Is that the reason you're entertaining the sale of that building, which is history and its contents, is it because you have a bad taste and things have went wrong with the governing body, the association of the, of the Cherryville Historical Society Board of Directors?
Okay, I'll answer that as best I can, because I cannot speak for the person that's put in the bid to buy the building. But we have a bid on the building. We spent $9 million, which all the citizens of Cherryville voted to redo downtown for one reason, was to make it invitable to bring in new business, new industry, and to help Cherryville grow. And now, you wanna say, we don't want you here? What do you say to a restaurant that wants to come in, and there's already one that's interested in that location? If that building. If that building is sold that wants to come in, do you tell them, "No, we don't want you"? What do you think that does to the other future people that are wanting to invest in Cherryville? That guy goes out and says, "They don't want you there." You know, "They just told me I can come and now..."
You know what you tell them? That building isn't for sale.
Right, that's what you want us to do. We don't want to progress anymore. We want to stay just the way we are, a small town with 6,000 population. We don't want new restaurants. We don't want new businesses.
There are other buildings that they can go and open. What's the... where's the microbrewery? I mean, that's seven years of buildings vacant, you know?
Let me ask Palmer a question.
And then renovations?
Since we've been threatened with a lawsuit, we probably shouldn't be talking about this in open session, should we? It could be discussed in quiet session. Yeah.
But no, you haven't been threatened with a lawsuit.
You told us you hired an attorney.
The board... I said it's counselled. I didn't say hired them. We consulted with attorney and we got advice from them. And that was the advice that we had got.
Sounded like we were going to get sued to me.
Hey, Jim.
I think it sounded like a threat.
What you said a while ago about telling these people that we don't want you now, whatever. Vicki had made a statement to me, "Well, Boozy, we've already got people lined up to come in up there and this and that." And I said, "Vicki, of all people, you should know better than to get your cart in front of your horse." I mean, you can't do this stuff. I mean, you know, I got somebody calling me up saying that Brian and Vicki and O'Leary and who else was up there when y'all looked at it that night? Al?
Al.
The jobs that they were up there looking and making plans ahead with Sammy's, with some crowd in Mooresville, with somebody at Gastonia or Bessemer City. And with that being said, how can you entertain bringing these people in here to show them that and think that's good when you ain't even made a move yet? I mean, I just can't fathom that.
And the motion and the following week, they brought in Sammy's.
When you have somebody who's giving you donations like this, you can't really turn them down.
They're looking for any place to locate in Cherryville.
They've given over $100,000. We had to show them the museum.
They've looked at the Old Pepperoni Express. They've looked at the Mayberry Building. They've looked at other sites. They're not just dead set on that, but...
But they're not O'Leary. I mean, you know, I'm saying...
I do know that they've come in and looked and they looked at the buildings. You look at the old Rogers building, it's pathetic. It looks so bad. And even with these people coming in and looking, they're seeing major, major renovations. And they don't have that kind of capital or money which to buy the building and then fix it up.
O'Leary does.
They back away from it and they won't buy.
The State Archives have been to the museum for years and there's still three quarters of that list has not ever been addressed, any of those. And they're all physical parts of the building that needed to be de-dressed. I'll share that.
Are you saying repairs?
Yes, repairs.
If you have money in the bank, y'all need to start repairing some of it.
It's not our building. So as a tenant, you...
You just said it wasn't the city's.
The lease agreement states that the city will take care of the outside and the museum will take care of the inside. Right here. I would be glad to show it to you afterwards if you'd like to see it.
We'll move on to another session.
Yeah, I think we've addressed it enough. I really do. We will go to item 14, Other Business. At this time, I think the only thing I have under Other Business is we're resetting our budget meeting till May the 6th at 8:00 in the morning at Fire Department Training Room.
So I will make that motion official. So I'll make a motion to change our budget work session to...
From April 29th to May the 6th.
May the 6th at 8:00 at the Fire Department.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to change the original scheduled budget meeting for the city from April 29th to May the 6th at 8:00 a.m. at the training room at the Fire Department. Any other discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion, please say aye. All opposed, there is none. I would now entertain a motion from a adjournment.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Have a motion to second for adjournment. All in favor, say aye. So be it. We are adjourned.